This is a meeting of the Newbury Library Board of Trustees. And I will call the role here and see who's present. Richard Raven, here. Margaret Grimes.
Present.
Terry Littres.
Here.
Alex Burke.
Here.
Okay, and Richard Pasieri, I'm here, and all the trustees are here. Now for staff, Jean Ackley.
Here.
And Erin Umack.
Here.
Okay, we're all present at the count. All right, the rest of the script goes. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Newbury Library Board of Trustees. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings as such, and the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law. They have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. For the raw members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The auto that you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless the participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment if there are any. For this meeting of the Library Board of Trustees is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the agenda on the town's website. That's it. All right, now to the agenda. Approval of the minutes.
All right, here they are.
Okay.
This is from January 15, 2021. Meeting was called to order via Zoom at 9:30 a.m. In attendance, Dick, Margaret, Terry, Alex, Dick, Jean, and Erin. The board voted unanimously to approve the minutes from the December 18 meeting. Jean presented her director's report, and Erin presented the monthly statistics report. Jean presented the budget update. The board voted unanimously to accept the FY '22 budget request letter. The next meeting will be February 26 at 9:30 a.m. via Zoom. The meeting adjourned at 10:25 a.m. And then I have a list of documents.
Motion? Accept? Modify? Anyone?
I make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
Yeah, second? Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. All right, directors' report.
I think I will let Erin start off with statistics, if that's all right.
Okay. Sure.
Okay. All right, so for January, which was an exciting month, we have a couple of things. It turns out that Ancestry has had an error in their statistics reporting for the last six months. So, and actually, we have double our numbers, is what they estimated, so that's good. We have better numbers than we realized. But there's almost no data for January itself, which is when they discovered the problem. So, that number for our ancestry searches is really for like one week when they were able to get data. So, everything should be fine now. Find out when I do the statistics next week for February. But Bernie Mittens was a huge hit all over the place. Like, he just like, I had posted it to kind people of Newbury as well, and it just, everybody loved it. And it got a lot of attention, and it got a lot of shares, and it got, so that was, it wasn't Bradley the Donkey, but, you know, close enough.
Hey, what you got, huh?
So, I feel like the kinds, in looking back at the kinds of social media posts that get attention, when we make people happy or we make them laugh, those are the things that really get people going. I mean, they like to see the more informational stuff, for sure, and our posts on programs and events and things like that. But, you know, I do the Monday funnies, and those things always, they just always go over really well. And especially maybe now, it's good to try to, you know, to make people laugh a little, if we can, or smile. So, let me see. We had started a return to tech help, on virtual tech help on Wednesdays, but we just found out that Mike Olson is moving, and we are not going to be able to offer that any longer. That's killer. But we weren't getting attendance at the virtual tech help either. So, you know, it's a bummer for the future, really, when we knew we were going to come back and have people come to tech help. So, that's a need we need to fill.
There may, he may, he's not actually moving out of the area. He's selling his house, so he's going to summer in Vermont and winter in, it's which, they rent by the water there. So, he may be back in touch, but right now, he's bogged down with selling his house and all of that. So, he hasn't ruled out getting involved again altogether.
Oh, good. Let me see. And then, aside from, you know, our statistics are pretty consistent at this point, you know. Regular circulation is down a little, digital circulation is up. And, you know, it's more or less consistent with how things have been. A couple of new projects are, and Jean, if it's okay, can I talk about the outdoor escape rooms scavenger hunt thing?
Yep.
So, I'm hoping to, I'm actually meeting later on today with Katie D., whose major was in history, to create for teens and adults an outdoor kind of escape room scavenger hunt idea, based on Newbury's local history. And so, if, I don't know if any, are all of you familiar with what an escape room is? Yes?
I'm not.
Okay, so it's kind of something that, it's a big puzzle that you try to solve, and you get clues, and you go from one spot, and it gives you a clue to get to the next spot, and then, and you go on through until you escape, escape the room. So, it started, people were literally in one room, and there were clues, and they had to figure out how to get out. This has sort of expanded to the outdoors. And there's a lot of really cool tidbits of local history in Newbury that we can use. You know, there's a murder here or there, like back in the 1600s, or, you know, like just to make it really engaging and fun for an older population to come through. So, we're gonna, we're gonna go over things this afternoon, Katie D. and I, and put some goals together, put some timelines together, when we think we can get this accomplished, and hopefully have it be something we can do for the summer.
Nice.
And any trustee input would be very well received, especially those of you with knowledge of local history.
Right, right. So, maybe eventually, and it's gonna be one of the kind of questions that's gonna lead you to another, you know, if, there's gonna be all little things, just like that, because it seemed to be so popular when you all were having those meetings.
Yeah. Apache?
What?
Fort Apache? That was one of the places.
And eventually, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, and eventually, yeah.
Yeah. So, I think it could be fun, and more information on that to come. Jean was able to get the line created, I think, if that's right, for our storyline. Is that ready, that's ready to go, right?
Yes. Aren't we calling it a phone-a-story? Didn't I have the wrong word?
Yes, because it's a storyline. We can do, we can do phone-a-story, too.
I thought you wanted it to be a phone-a-story.
So, this is something that we also hope to roll out for the summer, where you can call the library, and if you hit five, you get to listen to the story of the week that is read to you on the phone. It's something that I, I actually envisioned it to be part of the holidays last year, but like with Sue, you know, quitting and all of the transitioning, we couldn't get the information we needed in time to do it for the holidays. But it could work down the road for the elderly, for seniors who might feel lonely during the holidays, and they can call and listen to a story just as much as, you know, little kids could do it. So, we'll see if we can get that together and kind of tie it in with summer reading. So, the theme for summer reading for adults and kids is Tales and Tails. So, T-A-L-E-S and T-A-I-L-S. And so, we're trying to come up with some ideas for adult summer reading that the new, the new head of CIRC would really be kind of taking over. So, the more we can get ready for that person, I guess, unless they have their own creative ideas that they want to do about ourselves, brainstorming some of that stuff. And Stella Luna is finally in. So, the Storywak is in after much ado and much frozen ice that was just backbreaking, and the DPW went out of their way to help us, and they're amazing, and I gotta figure out a way that we can say a big thank you to them, because we couldn't, we couldn't be, it would be, you know, half-done and unusable without them. So, it's out there, it's being used, and they snowblowed a path. So, great.
I could add one thing. Some of the Zoom presentations that I've been watching from the Mass Library Board had some really interesting ideas for older citizens on Zoom, and for social interaction as well as purposeful activity. And they, some of the libraries were doing things like trivia in a group, and some other things, not just exercise. I don't have it right in front of me, but when, with the pandemic and not going, doing home delivery so much and stuff, they did a pivot to bring the elders closer to each other through Zoom. I realize they have to know, be able to do a Zoom and have a computer, but I can send the information that I have. I can't re, Alex, it's not the one that you went to, we both were at one, about legislators, but. But this one was really quite creative. I can send it, I'll send the information, my notes, to Jean, okay?
Okay, sure.
All right.
Maybe you have a link to the Zoom recording, I'd take a look at it, too.
Okay. Yeah, maybe, maybe it is a good idea to do another, the trivia night we did before was really successful.
Yeah. And I know some libraries are doing it themselves, and I actually did one with my family, so I could conceivably do one, I've just been a little distracted.
You know, the Museum of Old Newbury, on most Friday noon times.
Right.
Does a bit as well, and maybe.
Oh, yeah.
The approach taken over there would, would help to set a model, or suggest a model.
Do they use any kind of software, Alex, or do they just kind of go on Zoom and do it?
Truth is, I don't know.
Okay.
On Zoom and do it, for sure.
Uh-huh. And some people are doing bingo, too.
Yeah. Now, that would draw the old folks in.
You're probably right.
Kidding.
Not this old folk, but yeah.
Me neither.
Even if there was a prize at the end, Dick?
Carol and I have.
Signature at the end.
I volunteered for bingo when my daughter was in middle school, you know, for the band. I came home feeling that I had smoked 87 cigarettes because of the cigarette ban, and it was just.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. It's ruined me.
That's it from me.
Okay.
Unless, unless there's anything else, Jean, you want to mute him?
I don't think so.
I've got a question, might as well float it out at this point, it's not relevant to what we've been talking about, but ran into one of the neighbors out walking yesterday, and apparently, the youth baseball league is thinking about putting the lights on as spring comes on and the days get darker, although longer. And they're just a little concerned that perhaps that might inconvenience the library if the lights go on. For the life of me, I can't see how, but I thought I'd throw it out.
Are you talking about?
Should all think.
Leave, you're not saying leave them on all night?
No, dear God, no, until the game is over.
Oh, well, that's never been an issue for the library. It has, at times, been an issue for the people that live next door.
I think it would be more of a neighbor issue.
A neighbor issue. So, John Ashton lives next door. He, he has spoken up when we've accidentally left ours on past 10 o'clock, because I think there was an agreement years ago that we wouldn't leave them on past 10.
Sounds just like the golf course, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right.
Okay, so, budget-wise, I don't know if anybody checked their email this morning, but I got in early and went down a rabbit hole with the funds, and I decided to try and get them on the spreadsheet, which is, as you may notice, is still in transition. I'm being a little bit ADD with this spreadsheet, but anyway. So, as you can see, you know, I've separated between municipal and state aid and the gift and donation, so you can see the balances in the 1, 2, 3, 4th column over of what's left in wages and salary, salaries, what's left in library materials, because I need to track that, of course, to, when we get to what we budgeted, which is the $49,300, I have to start then using the funds to pay for materials. All of that is in a bit of flux this year, because I'm still not entirely clear just how low we can go with materials. I know they've said that we don't have to spend as much as we have in the past, but I want, just want to make sure I spend the maximum amount to get us the best state aid, if possible. So, that's still in a bit of flux. For other library expenses, you can see where we're at, we've got $13,000 left. That's, that's because a lot of that is going to the COVID expenses, which I still hope we're going to get reimbursed for. So, that's why that's at 67%. And we're at 60% of the year. The building maintenance utilities, you can see, I just put that line in under there, that's managed by the DPW, it's not anything we have anything to do with, but I thought it was valuable to show where that's at. So, that's at 42%, which is good, knock on wood. And then the total budget for the state. So, underneath that is state aid, we're spending very little of what we budgeted for salaries, we're only at 17%, and I haven't paid for any library materials from state aid yet. Like I said, I'll start doing that once we spend out what we budgeted from municipal funds for materials. Gift and donations, I just gotten these, I didn't always get gift and donation year-to-date expenditures from the accountant, but I'm getting them monthly now, so I just haven't had a chance to fill those in. But if in the orange, you'll see, those are all the balances of what is spendable from all of those funds. So, what is spendable from state aid is just about $31,000. From gift and donations is $13,732, and that's not restricted, those funds are not restricted. And then the ones below from the other funds, those are all restricted. What's in orange is the balance of what's spendable, but we haven't really spent from them yet, either. The trustees did vote to spend $1,300 from Arthur Johnson for materials, $400 from Hatch Week's books, and 80 for Hatch Week's AV, and $1,000 from the Randall Fund. You can see those down in their separate areas, but we haven't spent from them. So, these orange balances are from October of 2020. So, those are somewhat contingent on the stock market and how all of that is going. But I sent that other sheet, which I think is valuable for everybody to have with, about the funds, where it reminds everybody what the funds are restricted to, what's spendable, what's not spendable. And I just, I just want to make sure everybody has that in there, in their folders.
What is the Randall Fund?
The Randall Fund is a fund that was begun by, I don't remember the year, but it's for the benefit of the children's room. So, that's what FBO means. So, I've been, I plan to use that for mostly supplies, like, because the children's room is doing a lot of crafts now, for supplies for children's rooms' crafts. But we did have to a lot of $1,000 from the Randall Fund this year, because we needed more money for materials. But again, that situation is still in flux. I don't have any solid numbers about what we absolutely need to spend on materials. And I think that's it, unless people have questions.
In the, what was Smith account? That doesn't show up anywhere.
No, I, I don't put that on here. I have to go into ECCF to get those numbers. Last we looked, I think it was at about $13,000, $14,000, but of course, that's interest-only, we can only spend the interest. So, I will add that, actually, Dick, thank you for reminding me. I always think of that as something separate, but that should be in here as well.
And all of this is, information basically is coming to us now from the town accountant, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
But it's a lot more clear than it has been, Jean. This is a terrific job.
Good, I'm glad. Like I said, I.
Lot of work.
Went around in circles, but I think I finally got something that all of us can live with, hopefully.
Yeah, and it gives us a good picture of what we have available, and I asked, I asked about the accountant specifically, so.
Right.
It's a known quantity to the town that we have these funds sitting in these accounts, and they will fund us accordingly. So, I think, I think we take a look at them, and as you need things, you get the appropriate account that provides those resources as we forward and realize the intent of people making these donations.
Right.
Oh, well.
And just to point out, too, that that, so that $77,125 is the total of what we have that's spendable in the funds, separate from municipal.
Okay. Separate from municipal. Yeah, I'm not talking about spending it crazy or anything like that, but as things come up, I think it gives us, you know.
Look at what Erin does, huh?
When Erin comes up with an idea, yeah. At least we know there's potential for having findings, so, and that's good.
Right, so it's $71,000 total.
77.
Yeah, I was underestimating, I rounded down for each thing, because I didn't want to over, you know, but that's, that's a good amount of money.
Absolutely.
Yes, but remember, the fund, all the things in gray are restricted.
Right.
I know, we look at them in terms of what the restrictions are, and if there is something that comes up in that category, at least there's a mechanism to pay for it.
Right.
So, yeah. I think it gives the opportunity to do some creative thinking and creative programming and material choice.
Right, so for instance, could the Storywak could have come out of Randall type of thing? Would that be how that could work, or?
Only if the, we all determined that it was for the benefit of the children's room.
Okay.
So, therefore, I couldn't have walked the walk and said the story then.
Right, no adults allowed.
Unless you brought a grandchild.
Which, which, well, I didn't have a granddaughter, what could you do? She tried, she tried to do it after the first snowstorm, and they got to Station 6, and she and my wife gave up, so. I waited for the snow to melt before I did it.
Yeah.
It was, it was actually, it was, it was very enjoyable, it was good. And the story has changed, hasn't it? The second.
So, Stella Luna is, is in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And someday, we'll get some press coverage on this.
Yeah, now that, we can reach out again to Richard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be nice. And again, as Jean pointed out, the DPW, or maybe Erin mentioned, that the DPW did snow blow, so the pathway is, is accessible even now.
Yeah, it's the grass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, I happened to notice it last week, and I was impressed that you did that.
Just so appreciative that they did that.
All right, moving along.
Okay, so to get on to, move on to facilities, knock on wood, it's gonna have to be my head, no major issues to report. So, that, I was sure after I typed that, that something was gonna happen, but luckily it didn't. I have not reached out to Catherine Dela, I am taking Saturday, Tuesday, and Wednesday off, a little mini vacation, so I decided I'll wait till I get back, and then I can really follow through with her. But I think it's, you know, it would be a good idea for her to get in there and start, you know, doing what she had planned to do in there, assuming she's available. Which includes painting, and, you know, if there's not a lot of snow happening, the DPW might be able to help with painting as well. And as Erin said, they, the DPW plowed the path along the Storywak. Programming for adults, we are finding, like most libraries, that about 50% of those who register for a virtual program actually attend. This is considerably worse than in-person programming, but about the best we can hope for under the circumstance. I will say, having met with other directors of small libraries yesterday, that it is kind of all over the place. In West Newbury, she said her patrons are very happy to sit on their sofa and go to her program, whereas many others are saying, you know, they're just not getting the attention, and for children's programs especially, because kids are just zoomed out. Ted Weinstein's Armchair of New England was very well-received, he was wonderful, and again, so 17 registered, nine attended. Ted is so passionate about New England lore and such a great storyteller, I actually got to chat with him for 15 minutes before the program started.
I'm so jealous.
Yeah. Erin's had a crush on Ted for quite a few years. Anyway, he just.
Available on the.
From Chronicle, yeah. Is that what you asked, Tracy, or Terry?
No, I wondered if it was available to watch at any time on YouTube.
I have to check, I'm still working it out with Ethan, because now we're doing our programs on our library Zoom account, so I have to upload it to the cloud and, and send it to him, so he hasn't gotten back to me whether he received those or not, because I was a little nervous it wasn't gonna go through. So, you can either check the town station, or, you know, or the YouTube channel, which it basically is, or I will do that, too, I will try and remember to do that. Oh, yeah, I've got my note to Ethan, to get in touch with him. So, he's doing a new book, and correct me, Dick, if I'm wrong, but I thought he said it was on black baseball players pre Jackie Robinson. And so, he definitely wants to come back in person for when it's published. Which I thought sounded really interesting, so, unheralded black baseball players.
He was, he was very enjoyable to listen to, very enthusiastic.
Yeah, it's like you're sitting in your own living room, just chatting.
Yeah, he was, yeah, he was good.
Great. The, so the two-session Windows 10 program had five attendees, the Indian cooking program had 12 attendees out of 17. The Indian cooking program had 12 attendees out of 17, so that was good. It was excellent, well-received. And I, as I told you, my husband cooked and I hosted and got to eat after.
A friend and neighbor of mine attended that and loved it.
Good, yeah, the, the feedback was all positive. It was, it was very well done. Some of the March programs are seeing registrants, but not the job searching sessions as of now, which is troubling. I'm still going to, I've still not done it, but I'm going to write the, the article for the paper. Basically, here's our March programs in an article, please publish, because I think that's the only way it's ever going to happen. And we may need to promote a little bit more. And I wanted to mention too, that Stacy Fix, I don't know how many of you know her, but she has been running theater programs in the Newbury Elementary School for, I, it may be 20 years. I know my girls were in it back in the day. And she's, what's that, Margaret?
Sorry, my girls were in it too.
Yeah, she does a remark, remarkable job. She writes the plays herself, she's, she's something. So she approached me, um, because she, she has an idea for a community-wide project. She's calling it Acts of Kindness. So she reached out to the COA and the library. And she wants to have, uh, have a, I think about a dozen kids is all she's going to get. In other years, she, she would have had 100 kids to do this, but so many of the families she reached out to said their kids were just zoomed out and they just couldn't put one more Zoom project on top of them. But she'll have a handful of kids that she will rehearse virtually to do vignettes on seniors' lawns. They're going to just go, kind of go house to house and do a little, sort of an Aesop's kind of a vignette on people's lawns, which I think will be wonderful for seniors, especially as spring approaches. She's trying to get kids together to do phone trees for seniors. To, because one of the problems the, the COA has is for seniors that don't have computers, they are not in the loop about what's going on. So she figures she'll teach, uh, fourth and, fourth through sixth graders some phone skills, which many of them don't have anymore because they only use their phone for texting, and have them do a phone tree, a good old-fashioned phone tree to seniors to help keep them in the loop about, um, things that are happening. And then her concept about all this was to have one culminating community-wide, uh, performance of all these vignettes all at once on the library grounds. Outdoors, obviously. So I, it's, the day she called me, I was sitting here thinking, trying to figure out how to get started on outdoor programming, and the timing was just perfect, so. So we're working on that. So she, you know, through May, weather permitting, they will be doing some of their, um, rehearsing here, I believe. Because obviously she wants to get these kids outdoor and off of Zoom as soon as she can. So that, that will, um, happen in May. They may leave some of their props here, I'm, I'm not sure, probably not because of COVID regulations, but. And the, you know, the performance is, she's going to have them large puppets and she's got choreographers and she does a wonderful job. So that date is June 12th, um, which is a Saturday, the rain date is the Sunday. So the more on that to come.
Can you, um, ask to have events put, from the library put in the COA newsletter that comes out?
They usually do because they subscribe to our newsletter. So they take them right from ours and put them on there as soon as they can. So the Take and Make crafts are now offered along with the option of doing the craft together with Katie. And from what I understand, this has boosted the popularity. She's having a hard time keeping up with the kits. Katie is going to do a Do Together Cooking Program for Kids in April, one possibly two. And it's going to be filmed in Katie's new expansive kitchen, where I think she told me she has two stoves. So I'm jealous. Um, and Katie will be the prep cook and Emily, her eight-year-old, will be running the show. So that should be a lot of fun. And Katie McGann is finishing up her around-the-world offering for March, which will be Japan. And she's got some great stuff there, so I hope to see that soon. Staff, okay. As you can all imagine, and I'm sure you feel the same way, we're all going to miss Jane a lot. She's just so much fun to work with and I would put her customer skills service up against just about anyone else's any day. She's been letting her home delivery people know and other people know that, that call on the phone. They're, they're very sad, to put it mildly. Uh, her last day in the building will be March 13th. And I may as well interject there that I learned this week that we are also going to lose Marcia, um, at the end of May. It's, she's decided it's time to, to retire. I, I kind of expected that at some point. I wasn't sure when, so I was all set to approach her if she had any idea of when she might be leaving. And she, uh, she decided the end of May. So lots of new faces are going to be here at the, at the library. The great news about Marcia is she, for her son and herself, she very much wants to volunteer. Like for maybe more days, hours a week, which will be huge for us. Because her son does shelving and all kinds of things, you know, we're really struggling without volunteers, I have to tell you. So, um, having Marcia come in, pick up, you know, fill some cataloging gaps, shelving gaps and everything will be fabulous. She also wants to join the Friends, I don't know if I told you that, Erin.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so we're not losing her completely. And as far as Jane's position, we're eager to fill it by, um, the end of March, is what we're hoping for. We will begin interviewing as soon as possible and might be able to get Jane in on some of the interviews. Although we've decided that that's not going to happen. Um, and I can report more because I think it's the next item on the agenda, but we've gotten some pretty amazing, um, resumes and cover letters so far. So that's really encouraging. They, they've come, I think we've got eight so far, many very qualified, hit-the-ground people. Whether, um, their, where their living is going to work out, I don't know. But, uh, we've got some really good candidates, so I'm happy to report that. And the Friends of the Library meet on March 3rd, and I think Erin's going to attend that meeting because that will be my vacation day.
Oh, that's great. So we're taking over some of the Friends website is moving over to our website, um, to its own section. So I'm, I'm gonna be working with them on developing that. Because it's, it really hasn't been said they can manage and it's been very frustrating to them. So it, it really isn't, it's not too much work on our end to get it set up. So that'll, that'll be happening in the next, in the coming month as well.
I think the website has been looking great lately.
Oh, good.
That's all, all thanks to Erin. Can't, I can't take any credit for that whatsoever.
I'll be glad to get rid, I'll get rid of the red barn with the snow this weekend and I can put up my spring image with the cattails finally.
All right.
All right, next on the agenda, well, you have anything else on, on Jane's position?
Um, I'll leave that, I'm sure everybody's aware there will be gaps to fill. When, if we don't have somebody in her seat before she leaves, but also after, because we'll be training somebody. But Katie Burke has graciously agreed to take over book group for the interim. Not permanently, but for the interim. Katie is a voracious reader, so that, that's a good fit. Um, I'm going to take over the homebound people, so that, you know, that'll take a little bit of a chunk out of my, my time, but I'm happy to do it. And then there's genealogy and.
I, I got back to her that I, I can do it temporarily. I think it's better to have a librarian do it actually, when some, when somebody's ready to take it out.
That's, that's the tricky part, because we're losing our archival staff member, member. So, um, but thank you, that's great temporarily, that's great, because I would hate to see that go by the wayside. I think we can kind of segue into the update on the meeting with the HR board in that regard, because I had met with them three, three, almost four weeks ago. Basically, the meeting was called because I had reached out to Tracy to, um, try and get a handle on, on how, and if I'm repeating myself, I'm, I apologize, but try to get a handle on how employees move horizontally within the classification ranges they're in. In other words, how, are, are there merit-based ways that they can get raises and all of that? And Tracy, uh, you know, pointed out that the town has no personnel evaluation process as of now. I guess it sounds like they've been trying to get one going, but it hasn't happened yet. So it, it means we're kind of stuck with just the 2% colas that staff get every year. So basically, Tracy seemed to think that what I was asking for was a reclassification, which I wasn't, wasn't really asking for. I was really more asking for how do people make more money within that classification range? But the meeting was set up and, um, it was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting. It was very painstakingly, um, run. And basically, one of the first things that I learned in the beginning is that the, the Human Resources Board has really nothing to do with pay rates and wages and raises or any of that. They are strictly there to classify according to a very strict protocol that we went through bit by bit to classify positions. But they don't have anything to do with, with the pay range. So if I had known that going in, I probably would have, would have said, well, we probably don't really need the, this classification meeting. But there we were, it was very educational for me, for no other reason than to learn that. The, the wage, wages are set and determined by the town administrator, who is the main personnel, um, manager for the town. So like I said, it was, it was interesting to go through the, all the, the, um, the protocols and all the ways that they, they rate people, rate positions, not people, but positions, based on, on their, their responsibilities. But at the end of it, it was, it was basically, um, you know, Tracy and I spoke and it was pretty much, um, if I want to pay one person more, I have to let another person go. I have to work within the, or we have to work within the budget that we have. So that's, that's where things stood. And then I did, Tracy asked me if I knew Jane was looking, and I did know Jane was looking. In large part because I couldn't give her any promise that she could make more money at some point. And our efforts to have her make more money with the archives, or at least to pay an archival, be paid an archival wage, went by the wayside. And, um, you know, she was pretty much stuck with the, the trustees paying her from state aid to put in six hours a month in the archives. So that's all where things stand. That, um, job description was approved by the HR board and by Personnel Director. Jay, in other words, the Jane's CIRC position was. And then when you go through the process of, um, trying to fill a new position, you have to submit the job description in case there are any changes. And I'm pretty sure I mentioned at the meeting, and I had mentioned before, that we, we always knew that if we had to fill Jane's position, we most likely would not find somebody with archival experience. And based on the, the resumes I've gotten so far, that seems to be the case. So Erin and I removed it completely from the job description. And the question came from Diane Doyle at Town Hall. Well, we just approved this, this description, why do we have to now make more changes? I explained, bottom line is, we're going to, um, stick with the one that was approved three weeks ago. And then, you know, if, I, it's not likely that anybody's gonna take on those, those tasks. And quite honestly, I don't think it makes sense. You know, it was a hodgepodge with Jane. We were lucky she enjoyed doing archival stuff. She wanted the experience, it all worked out. But I was never comfortable with it being kind of stuck to, uh, you know, a, a position that really has nothing to do with the archives. So I explained to town, to Town Hall, um, that, you know, we'll have to come up with another solution if we want to keep up with our efforts in the archives. So that's where that, um, meeting landed. I'm starting to become, my daughter is a union activist and I'm starting to believe unions are the way to go in the future. Because I know it can be problematic as an employer, but, um, it just really is, is better for the employees. Anyway, you can, that should be edited out of this probably. Just a personal opinion.
Recorded.
Way too political, I'm sure. So.
I, I'd like, I'd like to raise, raise this. I mean, I, and we seem to have constantly beating our head against the wall in terms of salaries and budget and raises and so forth. And I wonder what the opportunity costs are for losing Jane and retraining, you know, training somebody new, losing, you know, what, what, what the actual numbers are. And if there's a way to codify that, but we have our next discussion about it, we can say, so we lost this very, the person wanted to stay here, she could see a, a better path forward and left. And here's what it cost them, and I have numbers. So that, so that the, our process of educating town on what it takes to keep talented and well-trained people. And look, look at all the courses Jane took on, on archival work over the last couple of years. All going now to further the aims of a different library, right? And, and this is the, the challenge. And so, so leaving things as stratified as they are, you know, in terms of, has costs. And, you know, they're probably aware of them, but I think it'd be good for us to keep track of them and figure out what, what, what the, the hours you're giving up and everybody else. Erin, I mean, all the people who are shifting duties to take on responsibilities that are not part of their job, because we have yet again locked very talented persons to better paying locations.
Yeah.
Well, in between both of those positions, that's our entire CIRC department.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wonder if there's any more lessons we can learn from this, because there's ways that we can do our job better, as per you.
Well, let me, I think one thing I did, I think should be, um, on the table, I should make you aware of, is that the, um, Jane's salary is, is pretty much in line with that position in other small libraries. So it, you know, it's, it, it was a personal thing for her, you know, I definitely wanted, well, if we were to go out and hire an archivist right now, we would need to pay them an archivist wage, not what this position makes. So that's, that was, you know, that seemed like a big way to, it was a win-win to, you know, be able to pay her more for her archival work, but that, that was not allowed. So, um, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that, that she's not, that position is not seriously underpaid. Would I like to get more money for it? Absolutely. Do I think I can? No. But it is, it is a reasonable salary for the position.
In the context of probably everybody in the system being underpaid for work.
Yeah, and librarians in general being underpaid.
I'm not sure the part-time, um, hourly wages are, those are, at this point, because minimum wage has been rising. What's minimum wage now? 12?
In Massachusetts, 12 something.
Something like that, and, and what are we paying, just over $13 an hour?
No, it would, that position would be 15, 70-something.
So it's, um, it's, I think those positions are, especially the CIRC one, Marcia's position, are, would you say, underpaid?
Not really, according to the. I'm not sure, I have to look again, but I can't remember if that position even requires a BA, to be honest. So, um, it's not all that low. They did reclassify that position, that did come out of that meeting. However, the, the pay rates were basically the same within the, you know, it's just that they thought she had a little bit more responsibility.
Within, within these job descriptions and categories, are there step increases? Within, within these job descriptions and categories, are there step increases associated with these?
No, there's no, none of that.
So you're, you're, you're in this job and it's, that's what it is.
Well, but they show a range.
They show, that's just it. They show a range, but there's no mechanism to move somebody within the range.
Every two to three years or something, you go from step one to step two to step three.
No, where you land is where you stay.
And the 2% COLA is in lieu of a step program and in lieu of personnel evaluation.
Is, is the range purely the when you hire somebody, you have to hire them within that range?
Yes.
And who makes that determination? If we decide we want to hire somebody at the high end of a range, is that our prerogative or do we have to get the approval of the?
You know, there, there was a good, a long discussion about master's programs because the, the HR folks were flabbergasted to see that we had a, a librarian with a master's and 20 years in a school library, working in that position that only requires, I think, two years of college. I have to look again.
Yeah. And, and in all fairness, Marsha was retired from.
Right, right. So there's a reason that she, she took that. But, and, but the, the point is, having a, a master's for a position that doesn't require one, doesn't score you any points. It doesn't, it doesn't get your wage.
Your wage, I, and then, and then, and again, Marsha would be limited on what she can earn anyways.
Absolutely.
Public sector.
Absolutely. She, you know, she, that was her choice.
Having, having been down that road, I understand that.
It doesn't correlate because, you know, I know when I was living there and I call, you know, post-college years, every record store clerk and bookstore person in Harvard Square had a master's, right?
Yeah, many book, bookstore clerks have masters.
Sounds of it, it sounds like we would, Jean, that you would have the freedom to give somebody a, a salary within that range, except that at the end of the day, your budget from the town is not going to increase.
So you. Isn't gonna, a good point, Erin. Yeah, that's not going to support.
No, that's just it.
So you'd have to take it from somewhere if you were going to make that change.
Right. And if it wasn't, you know, if we weren't in the middle of a pandemic and all the concerns about the economy and dwindling revenue in the town, you know, we, we would push for that, but.
And I'm just curious, so the people at the top like Tracy, are they just stuck with COLA raises and no ability?
No.
No?
I think, there, there, there's. Yeah, she's contracted. There's an evaluation process. I believe she works under, what, a three-year contract or something like that. Obviously, the salary is adjusted when the new contract is.
I was just asking for a friend.
Well, my position is contracted too, so I could start demanding all kinds of things.
I think it's out of the reality of.
It's kind of an is what it is kind of situation, you know, and maybe next year we'll be looking at something more promising.
And, and I think we're probably reflective of representative of smaller communities. People come and gain experience and move on. And I remember years ago with the police department, it was, it was like a revolving door. You have somebody come on, and you have somebody come onboard, the, the town sends them to the academy. They now have certifications of having attended a police academy and then they, you know, they go off and they go work a new report or Ipswich or bigger community and they don't have to be trained by that community. We've paid that. So, yeah. So it's, and, and it's not just here. It, it happens all over the place with small communities.
Yeah.
How many years was Jane at our library?
I think six. I think six. Yeah.
Trying to think. I thought she was here when I started as a trustee. That's eight or nine years now.
It is?
Yeah, yeah, right.
I've been here eight or nine years.
Yeah.
I think 2012 is when I started.
Yeah.
Here. And then Jane came. Oh, yeah. And then Suzanne didn't actually retire for a bit. So I think maybe two, two years after that is when.
Yeah, well, but she got to her five, five years last August. Because she got her.
How long, Jean, how long have you, how long have you been director?
You're asking too many hard questions.
Yeah, I know. I don't remember.
It was May of.
I think four, right? Because that's when I became AD as well.
Yeah, so it'd be five in May, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because, because Jane was an applicant for the job at that time.
That's right.
That's right. Forgot about that. Yeah.
So she had to be, yeah, Margaret.
Oh, I'm, I did not mean to interrupt you.
No, no, go ahead.
Listen, I booked myself for this meeting for about an hour.
Okay.
I shouldn't, I should have done it for longer. My apologies, but we did start our library business about 10 minutes later than we normally do. Anyway, I'm sorry. I need to leave. So if someone could just finish up the notes, I have most, I mean, I know the meeting is, most of the meeting is.
I'll, I'll email you when, when, when the meeting.
Pardon?
Yeah. I don't know if there are any other votes we have to take besides.
Right. It doesn't look like it on the agenda. So in fact, unless we vote on something, I, I don't need any minutes. I have all the documents that Jean and Erin sent, so I'm sorry.
Before you zoom, should, can we, should we pick a date for the next one?
Oh, sure. Yes. And I will also just, trustees, I'll send an email about Jane.
Okay.
In a separate thing. We don't have to, I don't have time to discuss it here, but we'll.
Okay.
Do it separately anyway.
Friday's, Friday morning's work about the 19th of the 26th.
19th would be great in case we're looking at reopening and all of that level of stuff.
Okay. So why don't we shoot for March 19th at 9:30?
Okay.
That works.
We may need a longer meeting if, if we're really talking about opening more.
Yeah.
You know.
I always say put an hour, but.
I know. I'll factor that in. Do you want to start it at nine instead? Is that better or not?
Nine thirty is better for me.
Nine thirty is better. All right. Let's stick with nine thirty. I will plan on an hour and a half.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll stay focused.
Yeah, we won't chit chat so much.
I didn't mean that as a criticism. I'm not running the meeting, but, and I don't like to leave, but I have to.
All right. It's all right.
Thanks. Thank you, Margaret.
Bye, everybody. Thank you, Jean and Erin, for all your amazing work. Bye.
Thank you. Oh, everybody moves.
I know.
You get used to them where they are and then they're all moved around.
All right. Let's move on to the next item. Rants.
Okay, so we got a virtual programming grant through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners with CARES Act funds for $2,540. And I think I had mentioned that I was applying for this. So it's all approved. I think the check, the check goes directly to the town. That's going to happen probably next week. And then I can start purchasing equipment for podcasting and video recording. And it also, 500 of it is also going towards the employment programs. The programs that are about interviewing and all of that in March. There are two sessions. We also got the Cultural Council grant, grant from Newbury to fund the Peabody Essex Library Pass. And we were denied by Georgetown. They've funded our Aquarium Pass for two year, or two years, I think it is. But we were denied this year. And upcoming use of the community room. A family called the Stanton's, I don't know if anybody knows them, Melissa and Michael Stanton. Their granddaughter is terribly ill with cancer and so they're doing a blood drive. And they've requested to use the library. So I, she called, well, actually first Heidi Fram called me and I, I said, I think everything will be fine as long as you clear it with the Board of Health. And of course, Steve Fram is on the Board of Health. So it's all been approved. It's on the calendar for, where am I? March 27th. And we had, she dropped off some flyers and things. I've looked at it as something that primarily they are promoting. It's being run through Mass General, I believe, so it will be two, two buses, school buses, I think, in the parking lot where you actually give blood. But what they want to use the library for is for filling out the paperwork. There's not a lot of paperwork, but they basically want to come in, fill out the paperwork through one door and then come in and leave the other door. So they'll need our tables and chairs as well. If it's a nice enough day, we might be able to have the tables and chairs outdoors. I'm not sure. But that's what they needed from the library.
Jean, when is that one? Because I don't see it on the calendar.
Yeah, we haven't put it up yet. March 27th.
And the Board of Health is obviously.
They've given their approvals and they're working with them too, I believe.
They'll follow all the appropriate protocols.
Yes. I, I wanted to be sure that that was all in their hands because I had no idea knowing whether we'd be open or not. We'll still be doing curbside. We may, you know, that's why I'd love it if we could get the tables and chairs outside, just so that we don't have any stuff, you know, there could be a lot of people. So I don't want any, to have any jams, right, where curbside is happening. So we'll have to give a little bit more thought to that. We may be open. I don't know. So that, that is kind of the last thing I did want to mention. Is I CC'd you, Dick, on a email to the Newbury Command Team and the Town Administrator telling them that, you know, I've been talking with other libraries and thinking that, you know, we, we should be preparing to reopen again to the public in a, on a limited basis. But losing Jane puts a whole new crimp in things. And if, if we don't have her position filled by the time we open, it will be particularly difficult because we'll be training somebody, well, first of all, we won't have anybody in the position. So that's tricky because it's an all hands on deck thing when you're trying to do both curbside and in-person services. So ideally, it's a long way of saying, ideally, I'd like to, to shoot for April 1st in the hopes that we'd have the position filled. I think it would still be kind of limited. We were, the staff was talking this morning, maybe we, we wouldn't try to do curbside and appointments at the same time. Maybe we just have walk-ins. We've got to, you know, kind of hash all that out. But in terms of a timeframe, I'd be comfortable with April 1st if the trustees are comfortable with it and if the command team is comfortable with it.
Has there been any indication from the town, what their thoughts are about, because Town Hall is still closed, right?
It's closed, but there, I, I did not realize they're open by appointment. When we all got the go-ahead to bring the staffs back in the building, it, I don't think it was brought up at that meeting that they were, that Town Hall was going to open for appointments. So especially when I heard that, I thought, well, I really should get things moving here. But then, of course, Jane gave her notice. So, you know, I, if, if the trustees would like us to try and shoot for openings sooner, I'm sure we can make that happen. I just think it would probably be easier on everybody, especially the staff.
Makes, makes sense.
It does to me. I only wonder what kind of requirement the town is going to put out there for us to be open versus what we think is the right thing for us to do.
Yeah. Well, the rates are, are very low. I, I, last I checked, I think it was, there were no cases in Newbury.
Yeah, no, that's not my point. The point is, the town may insist on, on, on our being open because all town buildings are going to be open before we may be ready to be open because of our staffing issue. So that's, that's a line we have to understand and walk.
Right. Right. Good point.
Right. I'm, I'm not expecting that just because Chief Lucy has been so conservative, you know, right from the get-go. So, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't happen. So I, I probably, you know, reached, there, I imagine all three of them, Board of Health, Lucy and Town Administrator are all going to confer and decide what, what to tell me. So that might not be until next week. So.
You know, when I went to go pick up the nomination papers, I had to make an appointment. And I, we met in the lobby.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It was not behind any door. So I'm not so sure what it means that they're open.
Yeah.
At all.
So I guess if, if we're not sure what the town's plans are, if we look at April 1st as our open date, and assuming that they even agree that we can open April 1st, who knows? I think we, you know, we proceed with that kind of planning. And if they require us to do something sooner, then we just have to adjust. I mean.
What about people being able to have the vaccine and getting the vaccine before it's open? And interacting with more people?
Well, other towns don't seem to be going that route. I don't see any indication that Newbury would. I mean, it's, libraries are all over the place in terms of who's open and who's not.
Right. So I know because of our going down a situable, that library is pretty much open. It still has to pick a book up here tomorrow. She just goes into, into the building, into the, into the building and it'll be on its table, her name on it. But it's, she's going in the building to get it. So, and I guess you can lose the stacks if you, if you choose to. So. It is all over the place. And I, and I think just listening to some of the things they're going to be opening, I was watching the hockey game last night. I guess by the middle of the month, close to the end of the month, they're going to be having people in in the stands and, and garden. So, you know, yeah. So restaurants, I think they're opening up more and more. I don't, you know, I hope it's okay.
The governor, so the governor's moving to what, phase four, step one, I think it is.
Is that where it's going? Okay.
Yeah. So, and libraries are included in there. What did you see, Erin? Is it 50% capacity?
If, I think it was for museums. I don't, but you've been ahead of the game as far as museums go. So I think we'd be at least 50%.
Yeah.
Which we really wouldn't, without doing programming, we, I don't think would reach those numbers. To worry about reaching those numbers.
Yeah.
You know, because we're not going to be having indoor children's programming, programs, which would take, that would bring in 50 people just to do due drops.
Right.
So without, without doing those kinds of things, and if we put limits on it, you know, half hour, you're limited to a half hour, I think it'll be okay.
Yeah, and, and most libraries that I've spoken with don't think that they'll do any indoor programming till fall. So that's, you know, so I want to really give thought to the outdoor programming that we can do as soon as possible, including for kids. I think that'll be huge. Get them off Zoom and outdoors.
You know, as, as crazy as this has all been, some of the Zoom experiences, the programming that we've been able to participate in, or at least listen to, is things that we probably never would have done before. So hopefully, there's still some niche going forward for this to continue. You know, some of the stuff, Alex, that the museum has done, you know, opens it up to a much broader audience. Things that we've done for the DPL and the State Library and various historical societies, you know, like things I never would have thought of. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be going to those places. It's just, you know, made it very interesting.
Well, not, not only that, but it turned local events into international ones.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I mean, because it's interesting to see. Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. I mean, because it's interesting to see people on some of these things commenting from California. You know, it's like, wow, who would have thought, you know?
Yeah.
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 So hopefully there's a niche for it going forward.
Yeah.
That'll be the challenge. And again, before I forget, Dick, congratulations on the book.
Thank you.
Good, good for you. That's.
Oh, yeah. And actually, if we're talking about the podcast, one of the ideas I thought for the podcast would be, I have a weekly, a bit about a book. That comes out on social media and things. So what if we did like a bit about an author? And did a podcast with local authors and, you know.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know if anybody's interested in that.
Might be. Depends how busy I am that day. I did, I've done one podcast already. Which I haven't publicized because it's like the first pancake, you know, you're learning.
That would be a good book title.
And I, I, I attended, but apparently the bottom part of my chin did not. It was for Merrimack Magazine.
Oh, yeah, Merrimack Valley Magazine.
Called the 495 and, and the editor there does it. And he was great. He loved my books. So, you know.
Nice.
Well, I'm loving it so far. I'm only about an eighth of the way through, but I'm loving it.
Well, thank you. You don't, it's not a requirement.
No, I, I wouldn't say it if, I wouldn't say it if I didn't feel it.
No, I mean, it feels like a real book. I mean, I've read a lot of, I've read a lot of self-published first novels. And, you know, it's not an easy process, but mine is, is a different thing. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good for you. Good for you.
Thank you. Onward.
Onward. Okay. So I think that's it.
All right. You need payroll signs.
Yes.
Okay, I'll be bye.
Okay.
In about 15 minutes. All right. All right. We're all done. We'll, we'll adjourn.
All right, great.
Everybody continue to be well. All right?
Yeah. Not sooner.
All right.
Great. Be well, everybody. Have a great weekend.
Bye-bye.